Going to get started. This is our regular meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, March 13th, 2025. We start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, so please join us for silent prayer. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to do introductions from the dais. Kristy Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse. Welcome. We've got a packed house here today. We've got a number of items that people want to comment to. We'll get to that. First, I'm going to accept a motion to, or I'll make the motion to approve in the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're going to go to public comments. I broke these down into four categories, and so the first ones to sign in were the folks that are here for the HomeARP funding. So the first speaker, and you've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes when you come forward, is Jessie Heiser. Welcome.
Thanks, Commissioners. My name's Jessie Heiser. I lead our local Cincinnati network with Undivided. I'd just like to tell you a quick story. When I was growing up, my parents got divorced, and my mom primarily raised us. She went from a stay-at-home mom, suddenly had to go back to work, go back to school and go back to work to start a career in order to solely support her three kids. There were periods where we lived in dilapidated public housing and periods where she could earn enough money to afford a small but decent apartment for us. At one of these high points, she had a hard time and couldn't make rent. She got evicted and had to pack up what she could and move her and my younger sister into a new, more affordable apartment unit. It wasn't as nice, but it worked, until it didn't, when she realized during the first major storm that one of the windows leaked heavily and the carpet was routinely soaked. Then she noticed the mold that was growing and the effect that was having on her health. After a year of struggling with mold and asthma symptoms, she moved again into an even smaller unit. This one, too, had maintenance problems, so a year later, they moved again. In my 11 years in this period, I changed schools three times. My younger sister changed schools seven times in 11 years. As a parent myself now, I don't like it when my kids even change teachers one time during the school year. The disruption and trauma housing insecurity creates for families and children has an impact that touches every part of society. When we at Undivided held the Listening Campaign in 2023, the lack of accessible, affordable housing was one of the top concerns of the people we talked to. I understand that the Community Development Advisory Committee has not recommended strategies to end homelessness for HomeARP money. I implore you to disregard their recommendations and approve their application anyways in order to prevent stories like these from being lived by more and more families, especially children in Cincinnati. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for being here. Our next speaker is Katina, is it Marath? Marathi. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Katina Marathi. I'm a resident of Hamilton County, a member of Undivided, and a volunteer at the Northern Kentucky Emergency Shelter. While all the agencies up for consideration for ARP funding are needed and are valuable services, I do not feel that strategies to end homelessness should be left off the table as it provides comparable shelter diversion services and something more. They spearhead our county's homeless database system and are committed to advocating for its utilization at the federal level. Strategies to End Homelessness is the expert of preventive data analysis. At a recent United Way Tocqueville event about housing security challenges, panelists were asked if any program stood out. Panelist Liz Bloom of Bloom Communities Partners mentioned one, Kevin Finn's Strategies to End Homelessness. The Cincinnati Hamilton County Continuum of Care was one of the first in the country to establish a shared database used by all our local homeless programs called the Homeless Management Information System, HMIS. Strategies to End Homelessness is the lead agency that manages that. This gives them immediate access to data to track program outcomes in real time and improve underperforming ones. All local homeless partner agencies' data is stored into this database. Cincinnati is a national leader when it comes to homelessness prevention, and this is thanks in large part to the work of strategies to end homelessness efforts like predictive data analysis to tackle housing instability before it escalates into homelessness by identifying families at risk for eviction. This cutting-edge method is not only cost-effective but has proven results. Cincinnati is one of only a handful communities globally implementing such advanced tools, positioning us as a leader in the field. I believe the only other place in Ohio that has something like this is Cleveland, and they're much more well-funded. The predictive data analysis tool is being studied by researchers at the University of Notre Dame. The additional funding being requested could significantly enhance that study by allowing them to gather even more data. By expanding this work, we can provide critical data that informs federal policy by paving the way for nationwide systemic change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right on time. Our next speaker is Linda Soro Fano.
Hello, my name is Linda Soro Fano, and I'm also with Undivided. Your job in selecting these five grants recipients is challenging, and I know that it tugs at your heart. I vet grants for Impact 100 and have been exposed to the needs of our community and how difficult it is to select ones that are most impactful. I feel that the work of strategies to end homelessness is transformational, and I thank you for this tireless work. So I am here to advocate that strategies to end homelessness be selected as one of the grant recipients. I would like to share my experience as a teacher. We often could help with media problems of a child being hungry or needing a cope, but when it came to homelessness, schools and teachers were really unable to provide much support. More often than not, these kids are significantly behind in meeting benchmarks for their grade level and ill-equipped to mentally take on the stressful disruption homelessness causes. I have volunteered for a nonprofit that houses families and churches until they could find secure housing. These kids are displaced, rising at 5:00 a.m. in the morning to take a bus to a central location where they can be transported to their schools. They arrive at the church with a backpack filled with the items that they need for living. Rarely did I see any school essentials. The collateral damage of a homelessness environment manifests itself in problem behaviors, poor academics, poor self-esteem, to name just a few. Providing stable housing for families is the starting point for making a difference in the lives of families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sharon Smith.
Welcome. Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Sharon Smith, and I'm a member of the local leadership team of Undivided. I'm here to advocate for strategies to end homelessness and their application for HomeARP funding. I'm also here because I have walked alongside a family member, a teenager, and many justice-involved women as they search for safe, affordable housing. In most cases, it is an overwhelming and discouraging process. I want it to be better. I know you do, too. Strategies to End Homelessness has long been a trusted and funded organization in Hamilton County. The organization has been awarded funding by the county in the past, and for good reason. They responsibly manage those dollars in ways that keep our neighbors in their homes when they are at risk of losing them. DOGE has proposed cuts to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and funding for rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing has been delayed. In Hamilton County, rent for 2,500 formerly homeless people is paid from these funds. That's just one of the ways our community could be affected by delay or elimination of this HUD money. Now is not the time for Hamilton County to delay financial support for strategies to end homelessness. We know that keeping our neighbors in their homes is much more cost-effective than the process of finding new housing in terms of dollars. In terms of trauma to those involved, it is over and above the last costly and most humane approach. Please support Strategies to End Homelessness by approving their application for funds.
Thank you. And our last speaker on this topic is Jessica Sattler. Is Jessica in the room? Is she online? Okay, great. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of the Council of Neighborhoods and I would like to speak on behalf of Strategies for Any Homelessness and ask that the Commissioners grant an access to the round one funding. I am an educator in Cincinnati Public Schools and help feed first-hand community impact at home and in the community and how the student's ability to go home and feel free. Last year, a student in my class came to school knowing that mom was being removed from their apartment. At the school, she did not know where she would be going or if she would be able to return to school. Our social worker would be able to find them temporarily helping, but the beds available weren't in town too far away, with limited public transportation, and in this location could not get to work or school, both of which were within walking distance of her apartment. So when a student left at the end of the day, I did not know if she would return to my class. The student in my new life are distressed over the nature of their home, and their home effects, where they will go to school, which is a vital part of community where they're known and safe and can continue learning without placement disruption. This is why I, too, am speaking on behalf of Strategies for Homelessness, because we are missioned to be proactive, timely, reactive. The forty families who stay in their home have provided measure is effective and several as well as non-cost-effective, those support services that come after homelessness. Thank you for your time and consideration of granting Strategies for Home, the HomeARP grant.
Thank you. All right, we've got another speaker on the impervious surface fee, Larry Falcon. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, members of the Commission. Larry Falcon, speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club Miami Group. I'm here today to talk to you about stormwater, MSD, and the impervious surface fee. We were here a number of times during the recently concluded budget process, and it was pointed out then that this wasn't exactly a budget issue, at least not ripe for the budget. But we were given some assurance that once the budget was settled, this topic would be taken up, and we've been trying to be patient with that process. But Commissioner Dumas and Commissioner Reese, I've reached out several times to your office to request some of your time or your staff's time to talk about this issue, and I haven't been able to get a response from either of your offices, so we'd really like an opportunity to communicate with you about the impervious surface fee. Every time it rains, billions of gallons of stormwater leave private property and enter MSD's sewers. And that stormwater in MSD's sewers costs MSD, by their calculations, more than $130 million a year. And none of that money comes from the landowners who generate that runoff. All of that money comes from sewer ratepayers that are usually residential and often low income. So it's a big justice issue, but it's also a big stormwater management issue because landowners have no reason to manage the stormwater on their own property, which is often the cheapest and most effective way to do it. You know, I would ask everybody in this room, how many of you today left your home and left a faucet running? Probably nobody, because we pay for tap water, and so we treat it like it has value. But we don't pay for stormwater leaving our property, and so we don't treat it like it has value, even though it costs our community, it costs MSD $130 million a year. And that's what we're trying to do, is manage stormwater in the cheapest and most effective way possible.
Thank you, Larry. Our next speaker is Carrie Davis, and I believe she's online. Are you there, Carrie?
Yes, ma'am.
Here we go.
I'm speaking on behalf of the Colrain Council of Neighborhoods and my daughter, the woman who was called last Friday. The Colrain Council of Neighborhoods, with over 345 members in Colrain Township, is extraordinarily grateful to the Commissioners for their stance at their meeting on Tuesday and how that resulted in an outcome that was positive for my daughter and my family, and led us to sleep well for the first time since the incident occurred. At the board of trustees meeting on Tuesday, the room erupted in applause when we spoke about your conduct and how you addressed this issue regarding the dogs. So the community supports you and thanks you for your advocacy for us. Yesterday, two more people were attacked in Colrain by dogs. We asked at the meeting that the Colrain Township reverse their policy that they have that states that they will not respond to animal complaints. We believe this is a dereliction of duty that has created this huge problem that is exploding as the weather gets nicer and that we don't want to have a child killed next. We asked that you have the county prosecutor research that section of the law and inform us. us, the community, as well as the township of their responsibilities as law enforcement officers to not have a blanket policy that says, "We will not respond to animal complaints." We also would like to ask that the commissioners assist the Colrain Council of Neighborhoods and the other residents in the development of a county policy on how we will handle dogs. I wanted to share with you some factor that did not come out.
Carrie, your two minutes is up. Could you send us the rest of your comments?
I have called each office and while two have spoken to me, nobody has responded to me. So I know it's a hot issue.
Yeah, and I think you'll hear more during the commissioners' comments related to this topic. So just want to make sure we're treating everyone fairly. So thank you for your comments and best wishes to your daughter. I'm sure she's struggling in her recovery, but I just want to offer that on behalf of the commission.
I do want to ask you to let me say one more thing.
Well, Carrie, I'm trying to treat everybody fairly. We've got a lot of speakers and I know you've talked to the offices individually. So as you know, you're always welcome to come and testify at our meetings on Thursdays, but we do have other speakers, so I'm going to move on to them. But more to come by way of the comments of the commissioners responding to what's going on in Colrain. Thank you for your comments. So our next speaker is Rick Grayway.
Good afternoon, county commissioners and administration. I'm Rick Grayway. I serve as a volunteer on America's River Roots Experience, a nonprofit corporation, and I'm one of the co-chairs. America's River Roots is a celebration of what makes our region unique. Its sounds, its flavors, and its culture. It's also a national celebration. We'll be promoting the whole inland river system of America, which is a part of this country that needs to be celebrated on our 250th birthday. The county's investment in the riverfront really is going to make this feasible because rather than have a county fairground where you've been to festivals before, these stages will be placed in beautiful park-like settings on both sides of the river. And the riverboats will be going by, we'll have music going on, and it's really a unique setting to do this for our country. We're also building our brand as a tourism destination. The cultural tourism will be promoted through a Riverwalk app that we've developed, a Freedom Journey app. We'll be promoting the brewery tour in Over the Rhine and also the Beeline in Covington. Again, unique aspects of our culture. The idea is to extend people's stay when they come here. We're also going to be using your investment in this to not only make this event accessible to everybody in Hamilton County, but also to attract regional visitors and attract media attention for our city. Again, we look forward to being your partner in this ambitious celebration, but we're ready to go and October is just around the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Fisher.
Good afternoon, Hamilton County Commissioners and Administration. I am Susan Fisher, the Executive Director of America's River Roots, a music festival that brings our community together to celebrate the rich heritage of the Ohio River and all those who have settled here, whether it be 250 years ago, 163 years ago, or five years ago. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak to you today in support of the administration's recommendation for 350,000 in large tourism event grant funding. River Roots is excited to leverage this funding as a one-time publicly accessible free event with an estimated $151 million economic impact, 30% of which will be coming from outside the region. With your support, we are on track to welcome nearly 1 million attendees for this five-day festival from October 8th through 12th. This will include nine riverboats, 186 cruises, three pedestrian bridges, 120 musical acts, and as of our call for vendors next week, we are going to feature 150 or more local vendors as we invite the community to participate, whether it be for food or beverage or operations, merchandise, and we're going to do a call for volunteers as well. We thank you for your support and appreciate any discussion on how we can add to our fun, safe, and diverse programming with the county's support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Our last speaker is Doug Olberding.
Hi. Good afternoon, members of the county commission. My name is Doug Olberding and I am the CEO and President of Pig Works, the organization behind the Flying Pig Marathon. The Flying Pig Marathon for the last 27 years has brought people from all 50 states and more than 20 foreign countries to Cincinnati to enjoy our beautiful city and our region. The Flying Pig Marathon uses over 8,000 volunteers on that weekend alone and we create not only economic impact of more than $20 million for this region, but also place marketing impacts and social impacts. You may have read that the Flying Pig Marathon was recently selected as the number one marathon in the United States. If you go to the USA Today website right now, voting is underway for 2025 and we're still in first place. So I want to thank you for all the support you've given us in the past and want to ask you to consider supporting us again in this upcoming year. We have faced challenges this year with the closing of the convention center, so we are spreading out our packet pickup operations over the course of an entire week in three different locations and we're welcoming visitors from all over the country. So we will use the money to help make this process as smooth and as accessible for all the people that will be coming to Cincinnati and we thank you for your support.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. That was the last speaker's card. Thank you all for participating in the meeting and giving us your thoughts related to some things that are on the agenda and other things that are not on the agenda. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues for their comments and anything that we have to say related to what we just heard. Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Thank you so much and also thank everyone for coming out for your specific activities, events that you want to have take place in the near future. I have quite a bit to speak about and I'll hold some of it for later, but I live by wisdom is a principal thing. Therefore, get wisdom and with all thy getting, get understanding. And so what I'm attempting to do today is to just give you a little snippet of my idea as it relates to the large event grant. But before I do that, let me just run through the activities that I've done this past week. I met with the Portman Company regarding convention center hotel upgrades. Well, it's not upgrades, it's brand new. Erica Gordon, I met with her about black maternal health. She's a professional doula. I also went to the Ready Cincinnati Annual Meeting and they talked about many economic achievements that we've given money toward. Then I went to TriHealth meeting with Mark Clement, who's the CEO for TriHealth. They're doing great things over there. In addition, we had, and I'm sure our president will talk more about it, but this is Women's History Month and we had a great picture outside of the courthouse with, I would say, about maybe 40 elected women officials. And then this morning, OKI Executive Committee, they're looking at making some adjustments as it relates to some of their mandates, still moving forward, but not sure what Washington is going to bring down as it relates to transportation and infrastructure. And then my AI session, which I'm doing with my Leadership Academy, ends this week and I've learned a lot and I'm hoping to provide administration and the board some information as far as how we can use AI more efficiently. We'll continue to use it because I found out that we really don't have any policies for that. So I'm going to move forward for the main thing I want to talk about. All we have to do is to look around or really just stand still and see the dramatic changes going on in our society. We cannot ignore it. And I am concerned about the basic needs of our citizens in this county. I'm going to talk later if the president allows that we bring up item 15, which is large event grants, but my major concern is to make sure that their basic needs of our people are met. So I have a little snippet of some PowerPoints if you can just start with the first one. And the first one talks about what several people who just came up for comments, that more people are without housing in Hamilton County. And this was put out on March 11th. Strategies to End Homelessness recently shared data with Cincinnati City Council showing a 7.5% increase in the number of people without housing. And we know that that number will be increasing. We also know that the number of homeless families, we already heard that when there was a presentation, are also increasing. We gave federal aid for housing and homelessness prevention, we continue to do so, but the resources are going away. And now with the increase, what are we as a county going to do? Can you go to the second? And it talks about government funding cuts put nonprofits at risk across the nation. So if the county is helping with these issues and then the nonprofits don't have the money to do it, where are we? Where are our people? And it talks about nonprofits are the cornerstone of vibrant, resilient communities providing day-to-day services and critical supports when disasters strike. In communities nationwide, nonprofits provide groceries, meals, shelter to people experiencing housing and food insecurity. They take care of the young and the elderly. We know suicide is going up. They run suicide prevention hotlines and intervention services and provide job training. Nonprofits organize after-school tutoring programs and manage free and low-cost medical clinics in rural, suburban, and urban communities. They help people gather, share stories, and organize community groups. So the point to this is, we've already heard, we've already seen, we stood still and saw that agencies such as council and agent could be affected that help seniors. The education program, they're already talking about closing the education department. What are the teachers going to do? What are the children going to do? Environmental efforts, I heard all of them, you can't go by everything you hear until you see it, environmental efforts are going to be cut, stopped. Title I, which is food programs for children that come USDA programs, they come into school and they need that meal in the morning because some of them, they look forward to that. They don't get the breakfast. Free store food bank is another one that could be impacted. HUD housing, we already know is going to be cut, there's no doubt about it, which includes our metropolitan housing programs and many others. Veterans funding has already been cut. Transportation as it relates to infrastructure, how are we going to continue to repair the bridges that we need to repair? If you could go to the next one, please. What is the financial risk of nonprofits losing governmental grants? Unfortunately, you don't see all the counties that were included, but I'd like to let you know that there are 90 counties. Franklin County has, if you look at the first line, the first column, it's the number of government grants. So Franklin County has 726 grants that they've put in. Cuyahoga has 550 grants. Hamilton County has 383, which means we're the third highest for grants. If you go to the second bullet point, or I should say column, it says how much money we've gotten in grants. So Hamilton County has got $978,485 in grants. And then the third column, operating surplus. So because of the grants, we're in a 9.101% surplus. Without grants, which is the next column, we'd be minus 8.79% in our budget. And then the last column is the share of grant recipients at risk. And for us, it's 62.92% of our nonprofits will be at risk. My concern is several, but I'm going to end it with this. We certainly want our nonprofits to continue to do the things that they do. I'm going to reach out to private people and agencies and companies and say, "Maybe you need to step up also and help us with the efforts that we need to make sure that the people in our community are sustained." Now, Madam President, I have specific comments as it relates to item 15 and would you prefer to not wait until we get to item 15?
Yes. Well, at least wait till we get to the regular agenda. So we'll finish our comments and then we'll start it on the agenda.
Okay. And if I could just make a comment to Mr. Faulkner, that around midnight last night, I wrote a note to my executive assistant to make sure we set up a meeting with you and we want to coordinate with Holly, so she'll be in there also. But I thank you for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Thank you very much. Have a couple of quick announcements where I've been. I've had a meeting with State Representative Karen Bromley and we talked about state issues and the impact of the state budget. And let me just say that I'm thoroughly disappointed that our governor and his state of the state did not address the rising outrageous costs of property taxes. I was hopeful that it would be in there and I remember last year, when I gave the state of the county, I called on the governor to freeze property taxes for senior citizens until the legislature could work things out. This has got to be the top priority. We are pricing people not only out of Hamilton County, but out of the state of Ohio with the formula that the state legislature has. And so I've talked to State Representative Karen Bromley, obviously she can't do it alone. This has to be a bipartisan thing because of who is in charge and certainly the group that her party is not in charge, but we need all hands on deck. This is a bipartisan thing. They don't care if you're a Democrat or Republican. The price has gone up and we have stood for affordable housing, this board, we have invested $60 million, bigger than any other government entity in over 234 years, to try to solve the problem or help with the problem. But we can't just build new housing for affordable housing. We've got to make sure the house that the people have right now, they can afford to stay in it. Grandma needs to be able to stay in her house and own it. And so I was very disappointed because it makes it very tough on us because we don't control that formula. We do control the 30% that was promised to the taxpayers who went to the polls and voted for two stadiums and I'm going to continue to fight for that. I was able to, we got it like twice, but we have to vote on it every year before December, but that's just a portion. The bigger portion has to come with a new formula from the state of Ohio and they have the power right now while they're doing a budget to put it in the budget document. If it doesn't make the budget document, you know, we've been up, myself and Commissioner Drehouse have both been at the state house, getting a bill and it has all these interested parties and you've got to have all these hearings. If you're only guaranteed one hearing, can't get it to the floor unless you get two hearings and you've got to go from the Senate, then you've got to go to the House. You can get it done right now. The only thing that has a deadline is the state budget. And so I would hope that, I would ask my colleagues if we could also, I know we've got some resolutions that we've been putting forward, I'd like to put a resolution forward on behalf of the taxpayers of Hamilton County to the legislature to implore them to deal with this budget issue of property taxes. And they can start off with seniors. We used to have something. Now seniors, you have to apply every year. Unfortunately, even myself, we're not getting any younger. Why do we got to keep applying every single year? So I would, I just wanted to let my colleagues know that I'll be bringing something forward that all of us hopefully can support to send it so we can be in the budget conversation of property taxes. When I was running, that was one of the number one things I heard from people. Knock on their door, they say, "We hope you'll be able to knock on this door again because I'm trying to hold on to the house I have." The second thing I did speak with, I met with Senator Bernie Moreno, United States Senator. His Southwest Ohio director asked to meet with us and introduce himself. His name is Ethan Nash. I've also expressed to him the issues of cutting all this funding, cutting funding that affects people. I mean, they're talking, they even cut fundings that affect people who have disabilities. Never heard of such a thing. And so we did put that on the table with that. We also brought up some projects that we have in the works as a county that possibly could be maybe at risk, maybe not. And he said it still might be at risk. The 911 The 911 center and a couple of our others. I also asked about the gun range. Supposedly, we have a letter, he couldn't, he said he think it might be cut, but then we found out it won't be cut. We don't know where to be cut with this administration. They change every single minute, not day but minute. But I wanted to let you know, we put that on the table. In addition, I also met with the Veteran Services Commission. And, you know, we approved having this event that helps veterans. Over 3,000 veterans, it was the first time we've done it in 234 years. And we wanted to continue it, not get rid of it, but continue it. And so we met and I'm happy to report that we will have a second annual Veterans Appreciation Day. It's going to be called Veterans and Military Appreciation Day. And that will be in August. And so more information will be coming. And supposedly, we're going to be bringing more people that can take applications on the spot, approvals on the spot, and hopefully be a national. They pick only certain, a couple of year, we hope to be the national place that gets selected. So wanted to say that I'm excited about that. In addition, the 513 Relief Bus is still out. We were able to have a partnership with dental care. I'm anxious to hear what the numbers were, number of people getting dental help last week. This week, they will be at CMHA on Friday, the 14th. And so people can go on 513belief.org to get more information. So I want to acknowledge that. They also will be going to Forest Park and Norwood. Those are the ones that are coming up before us. In addition, I want to congratulate on good news. This is March Madness. And we have four teams from Hamilton County that's competing this weekend with the basketball Final Four. They include Princeton and Wynton Woods and Purcell Marion Girls. Best of luck and let's bring the championship home. And on the boys' side, we have Aiken Falcon Boys Basketball Team. And they will be competing in Sandusky. The girls will be competing, I believe, in Dayton, Ohio. I don't have my glasses, but the boys will be in, will be competing against Sandusky. I'm sorry, for the Final Four. So let's bring it home. It brings me back to the part where I will continue to be pushing for amateur sports tourism. We've got the best athletes, I think, in the country. And particularly now with all the cuts and everything, we have to be very aggressive to get our kids to scholarships. And so as amateur sports tourism is a $91 billion economic impact business, on direct spend is $39 billion. We cannot allow the people around us to build these facilities and we get stuck with the big, we've got the big facilities, right? We've got a football stadium that only plays a few games and then it's just sitting here. We've got, of course, we've got a red stadium that's playing a few more, but there is an offseason. With the amateur facility, there is no offseason. Moms, dads, grandmas, they got your kids in some kind of activity. We're missing out. And this is a time when we need to be focused on things that bring us money. We can't get shy because we got, we're spending money. We got to have something that makes money. And this is something that continuously makes money. So I wanted to highlight that. Sticking on the sports side, I wanted to say to my colleagues and the administrator, there's been a lot of talk, and I won't go into it all today, about creating a sports authority, which would be an unelected board who would have all of the power dealing with sports. There seems to be, and America doesn't like it right now. Americans are very upset that people who are not elected, I'm not going to say no names, not elected is going in, getting your tax information, making decisions, walking around, and American people never got a chance to vote on them. We got similar models right here in Hamilton County. These unelected boards that make the decisions. In other words, we go out, we come to you, we get elected, and I'm very thankful, 218,338 people elected me. But then when we get down here, we then say, let's turn it over to an unelected board that will have the, our powers, but don't have to answer to you. If you don't like it, you can't get rid of them. And I'm telling you that the American people don't like it, Hamilton County doesn't like it. And if we did the sports authority board, that's what it would be. People would be appointed and people be walking around with government tools and people be walking around with the government money. And then they'll be walking around and if you don't like it, you can't get them at all. It won't be a meeting like this, that what you can get on the microphone and say, you didn't give me a meeting. So I want to put on the record, because if you're in these meetings, Mr. Aludo, I want to be on the record, I am not for anymore, including a sports authority corp. Not the sports commission, the corp. Because this corp will take over the sales tax and all the other tax, and they will be making the decisions. And all we would be doing is sitting up here with outfits on. I'm not for it. So I want to put it out there before they go run and say, we took a poll and we, the number one poll is the poll I just took. I just come out of an election. I talk to the people directly. And I'm bringing the issues and each of us have to do that. So I wanted to put that out there because I don't want, it's growing and we got to meet with, no, I'm not for it at all, at all. So I wanted to say that. The second thing I wanted to say is that, my last thing that I wanted to hit on was that, oh, I wanted to tell you, thank you. We are contracting and we contract with people. We'll be voting on another contract, some more contracts. And I believe that we must move to a code of conduct. If you work for the county, you have a code of conduct. If you don't make the code of conduct, there's some ramifications. If you work for, if you're a sheriff or, or someone else, if you do something, they're looking into it. Now, of course, we had a incident, but that ain't just the only incident. I want to make sure that everyone that's contracted with us, because they are an extension of your tax dollars, that they represent the county in the way that they are because that's who they're representing. They're on a county contract. So I want to thank Mr. Aludo. I know that the person that had the incident would no longer be around here, but I don't want it to be just, it's not just one person, it's not just one contract, it's everybody. And so I asked for a code of cond, a code of conduct, just a paragraph or something that everyone signs, that they understand this is how Hamilton County, how we are, what we value. And I appreciate Mr. Aludo saying he's working with the prosecutor's office and facilities and procurement to come back to us with something that we can take a look at. So I do want to acknowledge and thank him for that. The last thing, I did have a request on the Mercy Building that we're going to be moving into there by Reverend Damon Lynch III. He had asked, I was at Southern Grace, eats a black-owned, woman-owned company that's in the Xavier area, the new development, place was packed with diverse customers. My understanding, there is some sewer smell and they can't get it resolved. And so the owner wants to stay in Hamilton County, but Reverend Lynch III, and I was with Reverend Lynch II, they both had asked with the Mercy Building, along with Pastor Casey Smith, would we be having opportunities there? I don't know. So I wanted the board to know that and I'll pass it on to Mr. Aludo to look into the possibilities if we're going to have a food place there. And if Southern Grace, maybe you can, I'll get you their numbers, you can reach out and let us know and get back with us. So that's what, what I have and I will have more about the, about the grants and other items when we get to them. Thank you very much. Oh, wait, I need to commend you. I'm sorry. I wanted to commend you. Thank you so much, the women event that we had and we were all in the photo, we were in the purple. And just want to thank you and your office for organizing that and keeping it going.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to start there where you left off and mentioned that it's Women's History Month. And so every year, we have a photo of all the elected women in Hamilton County. I don't know if y'all know this, but we have more elected women in Hamilton County now than we have ever had in our history. And it's, it's hundreds. And so it's, and it's, so it's county commissioners, it's the auditor, the treasurer, but it's also local elected on school boards and villages and small cities and townships. And so we welcome them and Mary Mountie, the director of the Commission on Women and Girls, really, or I appreciate that you shout out, but Mary really did the work along, in partnership with my office. But, but anyway, we get this photo together and it's a lot of fun and we get, and we have the photo and we, we have it for posterity so that we can all recognize the importance of having women at the table because it didn't always look like this, not so long ago actually. And so we're celebrating that everybody gets a chance to sit at the table. And so we had that photo as we always do every year. So thank you, Commissioner Reese and Commissioner Somer Dumas for mentioning that. On that, in that same vein, I was the, one of the speakers at the launch of the Girl Scouts State of the Girl. They had a report. It was sobering. Girls have a lot of challenges, boys do too. And I don't want to miss that point, that the youth in this community are struggling in particular with mental health issues. But girls do specifically have some challenges that are specific to them. And so the report pointed that out, but it also talked about the resilience of girls in this community. And so they showed the, the report UC was the partner in putting the data together. And so it was really impressive and we are going to be paying particular attention to the results of the report as the Commission on Women and Girls comes forward with their recommendations here in a couple, I think it's actually next month that those recommendations will come forward. But the data that they collected was really useful. Also was, represented the commission at the launch of the OTR International Film Festival. So this has been going on for a number of years in our community. It highlights people with disabilities in the film industry, whether they're behind the camera or in front of the camera. It was a lot of fun. There were hundreds of people at the launch of this and they had the actress who was in Wicked, she came in for the launch. And so they, they have these festivals and then films showing all over the over the Rhine community. I've been to a couple of them myself and it's really inspiring to see people that have challenges that some of us would think were, you know, a lot to overcome. And here they are, doing what they do. And it's a real message of resilience from those individuals. So I was really happy. LAD was the premier sponsor for that. So thanks to LAD for inviting the commission to have a voice at that event. I also, on behalf of the commission, attended the Public Health Advisory Board. This is the annual meeting. We've all done it because we've all been president of the board. But Greg Kesterman did a fine job of detailing the state of the county by way of our health district. And we've got a lot going on, but I feel very confident and I know we all have a good relationship with Greg Kesterman, but a shout out to him and his team for keeping us healthy or as healthy as we can be here in Hamilton County. He and I were especially good partners during the COVID. I know we don't like to talk about it much anymore, but that was five years ago. And, and that was a real challenge and Greg Kesterman was on the job for three weeks and really stepped up in that space. So thank you to Greg and his continued work. I do want to highlight something that one of the, one of our speakers noted. So we have had another dog incident attack in Colrain Township. And so just for the community, I don't know how, how many people are following this closely. I know that we are. But we had a meeting on Tuesday with the dog warden to talk about the procedures, the policies related to dog attacks. And when a dog is, there's a vicious mauling of someone in the community, what is the response to that? And what does the ORC allow for? And what is the policy direction of this board? And so I thought we were very clear in our direction. And so the, the dog that was in question, the two dogs that were in question in the first attack were then taken under custody. So they are no longer at the home in Colrain Township. And that was following the meeting that we had and I was, and as Ms. Davis mentioned, they talked about it at the Colrain meeting. But there's been another attack. It was yesterday, three dogs were involved. And it was another situation where this was an unprovoked attack. And so the dog warden went out, I know the Colrain Police Office words were out there. So one dog is, was shot and killed. Another dog is in custody of animal cares. And the other dog is, from my understanding, getting medical treatment and then also going to animal cares. So none of them are going back to the home of the owner. And again, I think that is a positive sign because the community needs to feel safe and needs to know that these dogs aren't going to get out again. And, and I've been asked this question about why would you keep the dogs for 10 days? And I talked to Greg, God love Greg Kesterman on all things, but he explained that this is because if the dogs have rabies, then it's a real serious health issue for the individual that was bit. And so that will manifest itself in 10 days. If the dog is still alive in 10 days, they didn't have rabies. If they're not, then we have our answer. And rabies, from what Greg told me, is oftentimes fatal. And so we need to keep them in quarantine for 10 days so that we have our answer, answer so that the individual that was bit knows whether or not they need to then proceed with the treatment for rabies, which I understand is pretty grueling. But otherwise, it can most times be fatal. So that's the answer to that question because I've been asked that a couple of times. But I do want to say that we are in partnership with the dog warden at this point. There, I was also asked about some state legislation that has been introduced by Cindy Abrams and Cecil Thomas. And so we'll keep a close eye on that and make sure that everyone's up to date and whether or not we want to do a resolution also in support of that once they roll out language. We've got a couple of opportunities to weigh in on different things happening at state level. Commissioner Reese, you mentioned one as well, related to property taxes, and I'm supportive of that. So we just need to keep our eye on the ball when it comes to some of these things that impact our community that are taking place at the state level. So thank you for bringing that one forward. Okay, so we are going to, before we move to the regular agenda, Commissioner, I'm going to ask Administrator Aludo to offer his comments. And I know we have one by leave item that we'll dispose of pretty quickly here and then we'll get to item number 15.
Yeah. In Mr. Aludo's comments, I know we talked about a short-term, quick with the, as it relates to the dogs and the vicious dog, I guess the other one called danger and vicious. To me, they both are the same, but it is getting hot outside and more people are outside. So maybe we can, I know there was supposed to be some kind of steps or something. Maybe you can talk about like, what's that timeline? Because obviously, it's moving fast. We had one incident, now we had another incident. We just don't want this to, you know, just be out of control.
Yeah, so thank you, Commissioners. So just to respond to that, because that was going to be one of my comments, we are working with the prosecutor's office and with animal cares on a review of their policies and procedures. So from a short-term perspective, what we were really working on post-meeting was conversations with animal cares as it related to addressing the issue in the community at that point in time. And that led to the removal of that dog or those dogs from the household to make sure that community was, was safe. We are, however, we have had meetings with animal cares. We've talked separately with the prosecutor's office. We are going to be meeting jointly with them to talk about reviewing quickly their policies and procedures as it relates to the, how they interrelate with the Ohio Revised Code, to figure out what does it make sense to do? What do we have the legal authority to do? Where do we need to look at potential changes to the Ohio Revised Code, some of which are already starting to, to take shape? Because the, the code is a little ambiguous in terms of, of what it provides direct authority for. So we just need to make sure from the prosecutor's office that if we empower animal cares to take a specific action, that it is something that is defensible and that the prosecutor then would defend through their actions. And we think we can, we, we, we're pretty confident we can come to something, the conclusion on something that the commissioners will support and think is, is sensible and that animal cares will be able to, to implement in the field. So I hope to have that done within 30 days, to have that back to you all so that you have a, a good sense as to where we're moving with that.
Thank you.
So that was one thing, Commissioner. The only other thing I had was Commissioner Reese, you had mentioned the contractor code of conduct. We are continuing to work on that as well. We're going to, facilities is working on something that will go to the prosecutor's office, hope to have, have that to the prosecutor within a couple of days and we'll get something back to the board for your review. That was all I had, Commissioners. From a comments perspective, there is a by-leave item, it is an appointment. So Commissioner Drehouse, I didn't know if you wanted to take?
I happily do this. So the resolution reappointing a member to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Mark Rosenberg, is on the agenda to accept that appointment. I'm going to make the motion to approve of Mark Rosenberg for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Somer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you to Mark for being willing to serve in that way.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Are you moving on to the agenda?
I'm going to move to item number 15.
Okay, I just had a question. Commissioner Reese, you had mentioned, since like you say, we can't talk to each other, but I also met with Moreno's office and you brought up something about the gun range and what they said about, could you clarify for me what they said? Because we specifically asked them about that.
Yeah. Thank you. Met with them just to make it sure that the gun range, we were, I guess we're told, if you have a certain letter, it's in. So, and I guess it happened in '23 to go to '24, but if it had happened... So, and I guess it happened in '23 to go to '24, but if it had happened in '24, it would be in '25. That would not be funded because they not, they don't have a new budget. They're just extending a budget. So I had, I went and had Anson come in, Anson Turley, just to make sure we have a understanding.
Okay.
And it's kind of conflicting what he, well, he's new on the job, what he was told and kind of what we have in writing.
Okay.
So I asked them if they could get with the administration because I want to make absolutely sure, because I told them we had a, a letter, a deal, a contract, we're supposed to be getting the money.
Okay, very good.
And indicated if they do decide it happened, I told them we'll accept cash app and all of the other ones. We need the money right now, so.
Right.
But anyway, that just made me nervous when he was saying that he was told that everything will hold.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay.
Thank you. To be clear though, the money, that money is not in jeopardy.
On, on that particular round of congressionally directed spending, we don't think so. No, we don't think that's in jeopardy. There, there are some other rounds more recently, the most recent of which, we didn't have any direct asks that were funded, but there may have been some nonprofit. I remember when they restricted it from nonprofits, that one, there may be some there, but nothing that we're aware of as it relates to the gun range.
Okay, all right, very good. So with the deference of the Commissioners, I'm going to move item number 15 to the top of the agenda here. Eric Beck, I'm sure you're in the room. Hold, hold for one second, my friend. We're getting there. All right, so let's take up item 15. This is the large, large event grant. We had a report from Holly Christman, who was in the room, related to this grant. This is the one where, started it a few years ago. A number of different organizations have been awarded this grant over the last few years. This is meant to increase economic activity in the region through the events that are funded. It's not to say that the events wouldn't move forward without this funding. I think we all think that they would, but they would not move forward in the way that they can with this additional money to expand, as, as has been testified to, the outreach of the organizations that are hosting the events and the impact to sales tax, hotel motel tax, and all the other things that the county benefits from. So again, the idea is to increase economic activity and dollars to the county. So that is the, the item. Commissioners, I will, why don't, I'll make the motion to approve of item number 15. Have the second and then go to discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm going to make the motion to approve of item number 15.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse.
No, 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 no. Well, we're going to have discussion. Let's, so let's have a discussion on, on item number 15.
Thank you.
Commissioner Someradumis.
And I'm sorry, I do have to leave it too, but at the point that you guys are still discussing, if you, if you could let me know and my chief will bring me back in for the vote, okay? I normally don't do this, I never miss it, but I have to, this is our last AI group and I'll get, I'll not be certified, so. Anyway, let me just say this, I appreciate all these great events that have come forward. All of them look fantastic. They're great for the community and so I have no major problem with these events. I appreciate also the staff that provided the reductions of funding that we were going to give. It's a significant reduction on all of them, but specifically America's River Roots is their first time asking for funding and I'm sure it would be a great event. I just feel as if it's a bad timing in general for all four of them because I said at the Tuesday meeting, I would like for us to keep the 1.25 in our budget for necessities, for food, for housing, seniors, all of that. And I understand the economic impact, but I also understand, in my opinion, that all these groups will move forward, maybe on a scaled down version, but I believe that we should keep the money in our, in our budget. And the Santangelo Group, I just had a specific question. This music festival was first held in a different name in 1962. Could you come up for a second? And I noticed as we, thank you, well, yeah. I noticed our summary says, according to the application, Cincinnati Music Festival had a total combined economic impact of 143.9 million, but it says in 2017. So we have given monies to your organization since '22, '23, and '24, and I'm just wondering why the economic impact did not reflect into any of this recent funding.
We had not yet had a impact study done since 2017. Was the last, I think, impact study that we had. And that one was, I think, 110 million or something like that, but that was in $2017. We have not had a current impact, although the estimate is considered to be much higher because ticket prices are higher, hotel rates are higher and so on.
Yeah, I have no doubt that there will be economic impact, pact and probably higher. I don't know if Holly's in the room.
She is.
Joe, will you introduce yourself just so we have you on record?
Oh, yeah. My name is Joe Santangelo and I'm the president of Santangelo Group, Inc., and we produce the Cincinnati Music Festival.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's the only question that I have for you.
That's it?
Yeah. Yeah. Holly, I was just wondering, the application itself indicates that you have to say what the economic impact will be for Hamilton County. Why did we use 2017 numbers?
Not every event does an economic impact study every year. I think, I don't want to put words in the mouth, for example, Flying Pig, I think, does it every other year. So I mean, it's-
So this has been since '22?
Right, and I believe, Leonard, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, they put in their application, they'd be doing another one this year.
We do have on our to-do list that we have another one redone.
And of course, we also have hotel star reports from the Convention and Visitors Bureau as well. So we don't require an economic impact study every single year as part of our application. We just require what is the estimated economic impact as supplied by the grantee, in this case. Santangelo provided previous years and we have physically seen the economic impact that event brings as well.
So eight years ago. That's not acceptable to me. So I'll just move on. Under Pig Works, this would be their second year for funding. And I know it's a great event. I mean, I've not been involved in it, but I've seen it. And then the next one is Black Tech Week, which they have never been funded. And the reason why I just bring this, this up is just to clarify what I said earlier. These are great events. Oh, I'm done, Holly, yeah. And I just wonder, how long are we going to supplement? It's been four years. I think that they will exist without us. It'll be a scaled down model and I think they'll be fine and we'll still have 1.25 million in our, in our budget to help the needy people that are needing food and housing and all of that. So that's all I have for comments and so I will come back for the vote, please.
I don't know that it'll take very long. Do you want to hold for one second? Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you. We passed a budget, we do our budget every year, unlike city councils every two years and states every two years. We do it every single year. And I know that when we passed our budget, we passed it in December, so that was after the election cycle. I believe that we got to have a balance. We have $5 million. We have an interest fund. We made a lot of money off of interest. And I think it was about $40 million that was said in our budget of interest. And we took the interest and put $5 million toward the soccer, a women's soccer team, but we were unable to secure the soccer team. We put it for $5 million, but they were unable to get it. They weren't selected. So we've got $5 million sitting over there, not to mention the structurally balanced budget that we passed with a reserve in it. We have several projects that we're asked about and that we, several projects that we asked about that we're continuing to build. We're building things. We're moving forward. And I just believe that this particular grant, which is called the Large Tourism Event Grant. So these projects are tourism attractions. There is competition all around us, across the river in Kentucky and Indiana, they're coming. And I believe that this, this grant that we are providing is tied to hotel nights and we've, I've seen the numbers of the music festival hotel nights. I mean, it's the larger, we, we charge the largest rates of the year on an annual basis. I mean, it's about, what, 52 years? We've been collecting money and we put it in a fund and we've taken the hotel motel tax money from the festival as one of the largest economic impact. One year I thought saw the number $9 million just on the tax portion. Now, we didn't get all of it, but there was, and that was the year that the festival said they didn't have the best lineup, $9 million. So we're taking this money and reinvesting in tourism events to continue to bring money. Flying Pig, I remember Flying Pig was just the sculptures. I was on city council and they said, well, now we want to go from sculptures to now bringing people to the region. And then we're going to bring people from all over the world. And families right now are training together in a health perspective as well for Flying Pig and now we're international. Now we're award-winning. Now people are planning their trips to come here to run in the Flying Pig. And it's throughout the county. You've got several different locations and you, people are booking hotel rooms. And so we do have the receipts on hotel rooms, by the way, because we get money from it. So we can pull those receipts for each of these weekends to back them up. And then Black Tech Week, a time we're hollering about entrepreneurial. How do we be futuristic? It's a time now that more people are going to have to be entrepreneurs because they're losing their jobs. What, 200,000 people have lost their jobs? Now more people have to be entrepreneurs. And so we can't be the county of anti-small business. We got, we have a small business office now and that I created and with the help of my colleagues, thanking them for that. But now we're talking about bringing people from all over, investors that will hopefully want to invest in our small businesses here. So we want to connect Black Tech Week with our Office of Small Business and Robert Bell's, I think he was back there, Robert Bell, who deals with our minority inclusion. We want to be number one and we want to bring them and they're bringing in people. Inc. Magazine, you can't pay for this type of, we couldn't advertise. The music festival, we can't pay for this kind of advertisement with all these folks coming here. Louisville would love to eat us for lunch, but we say no, we were first. So it's very important. And then I, I did have questions about the roots, just the only one that has not had a track record. But I am willing to move forward with it, but I want, I wanted language and I want to think, I think we got language in here. If you don't pull it off in time, don't hold on to the money, we, we would want to put that money back somewhere else. And I do want to say, I'd like to, to focus more on the roots, but not so much just on the slavery. I'm just going to say that to you. As an African-American woman myself, I, we don't, I don't want to glorify slavery and hug it all day long. I got to see that we did overcome and we did do some things. And that's very important. I don't want this to be a birthday cake thing because we are still, many people feel like right now, it's not a lot to celebrate in that regard. So I would, I would add that to you. So with that, Commissioner, I support this. I see this as investment that we're getting back. When you look at the tax receipts, look at the hotel tax receipts, we're getting back three times, four times, just on the hotel tax receipts, not to mention the sales tax. If we look at those weekends and what the sales tax are, and we're re, we're taking more money in, taking a small portion and then re, it's like, you know, when you're investing in a company, you reinvest a little bit more and then you get some more in. And that's what we're doing, so I, I support this.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's a return on an investment scenario here and we're investing in something collectively so that we get a return on that investment through resources to the county budget to help us do all the other things that we do. So I, I agree with that. I think all four of these, the, the Music Fest, the Black Tech Week, Pig Works, and River Roots are all going to bring a lot of excitement and economic development to this community, so I'm pretty excited about it. The other thing I want to say by way of knowing about the economic impact, we do have information, whether it's from the organizations themselves or the Chamber of Commerce or Visit Cincy, there have been a lot of economic impacts done and I've had the opportunity to serve on Visit Cincy for a number of years. And so as you say, the room nights, it becomes very clear what the impact is when you look at the, not only the hotel motel tax, which is that, but all of the other economic benefits coming in from these events. So I would concur with that. So we've got a motion on the table. We've got a second. I'm going to ask to call the vote.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Someradumis.
Abstain.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you all for being here. We're going to move to the engineer. It's item number one. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Just one item today. Item number one is awarding of the bid for the 2025 Resurfacing Program, which is Project 502-502, doing various roads in Anderson, Colrain, Crosby, Green, Harrison, and Springfield Townships totaling 12.13 miles. We opened bids on February 6th. John R. Jurgensen Company was the lowest bidder. Our engineer's estimate was $6,310,000. The bid amount was $5,825,000, about six percent, or excuse me, about eight percent below the engineer's estimate. Funding will come from $2 million from the Road and Bridge Fund, 2.9 million for Permissive Auto, and we have $924,000 from Greater Cincinnati Water Works for some paving on roads they did projects on.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Reese?
I do have a question. Maybe it's about this, but it kind of is, I think, tied in. Potholes, and I know the city is-
We don't have them.
We don't have them. I was out in the county and I said, wait a minute, let me call my engineer. I know he's going to get this together. But no, my question is, as we're resurfacing, you're talking about the miles. Does that include, or what are we doing with potholes that are outside of-
Potholes are outside of our contracts. We do those with our own forces. We have crews out every day filling potholes.
Okay. Now, they gave us, Cincinnati gave a report, this many potholes have been filled. I'm sure you have a report. Is there something we-
I can't give you a number of potholes filled. I can probably get you numbers of how much asphalt we use in a day to fill potholes, but we don't actually count the individual potholes.
Oh, wow.
We can tell you the location and how much asphalt we used and how much man, man-hours were done to do it.
Oh, wow. So what do we do if we have somebody calling us that's outside of the city that has potholes? I know you said call the person. Now, I can't go around and find all these potholes. I mean, I'm just-
If anybody calls our office with pothole request, we will take the information, whether it's on our road or somebody else's road. If it's on our road, it immediately goes to our maintenance forces who go out and take care of it. If it's somebody else's jurisdiction, we relay the information to them.
Okay. I just wish we had some kind of, you know, technology now. You know, everybody's got these things here. I just wish it was some way we could, you know, here's where the potholes are, they've been filled, you know, we, like, you know, we, we've filled X amount of potholes, you know, under X, Y, and Z. I just think that taxpayers would just love to know, like, because, you know, when they get mad, they, you know, these, the other thing I want to ask, are we using the same products? Because I know they said that we got a, a tough winter and all.
Well, part, part of the problem is, in Cincinnati, the asphalt plant shut down in November. All, all, like Jurgensen and Barrett, they shut their asphalt plants down so they can rehab them and get them ready to go. They typically don't open up till April. So we do not have a source of hot mix asphalt during the winter. So that leads us to use cold mix, which is not as durable and does not stand up as well for patching potholes. So typically, they do not, they don't last if you're using cold mix. So typically what will happen is we'll go out and redo them with, with hot mix when the asphalt plants open.
Got you. That's good to know because people was, you know, I'm not, I'm not a chemist, but people are saying maybe the salt we're throwing down is, I mean, these holes are like only seen in the movies.
They're big, yeah.
like, only seen in the movies, you know? It's really bad, and I went to, to get my car fixed, thank God, mine was two nails, I don't know how these nails, they got a problem with nails too, but when I got there, the guy said, man, a guy just left here, hit the pothole, and it cost him $3,000.
It's possible, typically, the, when we get tires blown out from potholes, people will call us, and it's typically low-profile tires, because they don't have as much absorption when they hit, hit something. So, the, the, the smaller your profile in your tire, the more chance you're gonna probably blow it if you hit something.
I knew the engineer would have, I just wanna, if we're gonna prove this, I, I mean, I'm even for double the money if you can get these potholes fixed. I was gonna, I was gonna, I, I'm looking for the Uber-
I'll tell you what!
I'm looking for the Uber of potholes, two million truck.
All right, I think it's time.
Commissioner Treehouse is saying no!
See, that's only one bar, I'll try to get another, but we only gotta get two, but no, my point is, I wanted to make sure, people hear this, they're gonna say, well, this is gonna help me with these potholes.
Getting new surface down will, will help prevent potholes on those roads for an extended period of time.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna move that we approve of item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and if you wanna send me more money, I'll be glad to do that.
There we go, all right.
Pothole Strike Force!
Impromptu Pothole Update, here we go. All right, Administrator Aludo, can you walk us through the rest?
Commissioner, your consent agenda, item number two is a resolution, this is a reconciliation of the board of elections, which, as the board is aware, sometimes, we have a reserve fund with the board of elections, we try to budget at a relatively consistent level to avoid the cyclical nature of elections costs, so at this point in time, we're actually transferring money back from that fund to the general fund, at 3.58 million. Item number three is budgeting the carrying costs at the central campus, 1.4 million, about 500,000 of that is going to be formed from rent from Mercy, as well as some remaining project funds. Item number four is an amendment with Messer for 552,000, this is related to the demolition and construction to Hilltop. Five is a resolution, THP, 98,000 for the same purpose. Item number six is the, is a resolution donating property to the Hamilton County Land Bank, this is a very small sliver of property, 0.012 acres, adjacent to the Findlay Garage. Item number seven is the board of Health and Construction for the Courthouse Law Library, 571,000, $100,000. Item number eight is a resolution awarding Jeep with Health and Construction of Indiana, this is for the Justice Center College of Concrete project, 338,000. Item nine, fourteen are all replacement vehicles for the sheriff, I'll walk you through them very quickly.
I'm sorry, thank you. Why didn't someone throw something at me? I'm gonna start over.
No, no, thank you.
Item number nine is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Ford Edge at $30,422. Item 10 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Ford Edge, $25,922. Item 11 is a Jeep Cherokee, $35,625. Item 12 is a Chrysler Pacifica, $35,262. Item 13 is a purchase of two 2023 Dodge Chargers, $52,536. Item 14 is a Dodge Durango, $30,848. Item number 15, we've addressed early, commissioners, item 16 and 17 are both job and family services items. Item number one is the renewal of an agreement with Adenec Corporation for family placement services, family placement services, $500,000. Item number 17 is an agreement with Buckeye Ranch for family placement services, 2.12 million. Item number 18 is a request authorizing travel, this is the coroner, one employee to Las Vegas, Nevada, and we have covered the by leave items, commissioners, so that is your consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Commissioner Reese, any questions or comments?
No questions at this time.
All right, I am gonna move that we approve and receive for the record items two through 14, and 16 through 18.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
All right, with no further business, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.